Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven P M. We have Commissioner Crane absent this evening and Commissioner Majin as well. First off, Citizen Communication, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the Planning and Zoning Commission, not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that's not on the Polish's agenda will only be heard by the commission. Each person, no formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes, and we ask to state his or her name for the public record. Is there anyone present wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on, and we're actually going to flip the agenda just a little bit and cover the consent agenda, item four first. All matters listed under the consent agenda or considered routine by the commission will be enacted by one motion. These items include preliminary and final plats where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any commissioner desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, we'll move it to the regular agenda. Is there any items that any commissioner wishes to remove from consent? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Seconded.
Aye.
You voted at the same time. All right, let's do it for real now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. So eager. All right, next up, we're going to go back to item three A on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the Youth Advisory Council. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks, you may have seen me last year too for this. This is our Youth Advisory Council. They are high school juniors and seniors who are learning about local government. So last week they got to meet with Emily and Brittany here all about planning, development services. So tonight they are here to speak to you, to hear about this side of the planning fun. This is, you know, open conversation for you guys to share what you do and for them to ask you any questions that they might have.
Awesome. Well, first of all, thank you all so much for showing up. I know I saw a few of you at the last city council meeting as well, which was fantastic. I really appreciate you all stepping up and being engaged here in our fabulous city of Flugerville. It's always, I think, pretty motivating to see folks of all types and ages come in and engage with the city. It's something that we desperately need more of, and so love that you all signed up to do this, and I hope every session you all have is really exciting and you learn something great. We've got a great commission here, and I'm sure we will have some questions for you all, and I'm sure you all have some stuff for us.
Thank you.
You want to go? No? Okay. I'll, I can ask one to start us off here. So being the, on the Youth Advisory Council, what would you most like to get out of your experience?
I think for me personally, I would say just very firsthand experience with local government and know the intricacies of how it works, even the different departments, how they interact with each other. I know I'm very interested in learning also about, you know, attorney and justice as well, which I think we're going to learn about later on. But yeah, just getting firsthand experience with government and government, you know, councils like you guys is what I really want from this experience.
Awesome. Anyone else want to answer as well? I was just going to say aye to that one. I'll ask another one. This is something, so I do a little bit of volunteering at the high schools to do voter registration, and one of the things I always like to ask them is, what do you think we could improve in Flugerville? What do you all think that we're either not doing enough of or something that we're not paying attention to that we should be? Would love to hear your all's thoughts on that.
In terms of planning and zoning or just in general?
It can be in general. So then the Planning and Zoning Commission covers all of the new developments, of course. Repurposing and updating existing businesses come through here pretty often. We get previews of a lot of what's coming to town, and so certainly anything in that, but it's an open question.
I know one thing that I also brought up during our meeting, I think last Monday as well, was the fact that I really noticed that our city isn't very walkable to that great of an extent, and that's just, yeah.
I'm trying to think of that.
Yeah, I know a lot of people like to ride bikes and stuff, and I, and maybe not all places is the best to do that because I know that I used to live in Black Hawk, but walking from Black Hawk to a school like Murkison or Kelly Lane was really hard because coming out of, like, that stop, weird stop sign through, like, I think it's like Kelly Lane or whatever, I, that was really hard, so I would just, my mom would just drive us. But I live closer, which is more walkable, but definitely a lot of our students come from those areas that it's harder to get to school without relying on some sort of car or other sort of public transportation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I think it's something that all of us have agreed on and pushed for as we've been up here. I think it's, it definitely is treacherous sometimes. And one of the things that we do pay pretty close attention to when there's new development plans coming through is making sure that they are, you know, taking full advantage of, of space so that we can have good sidewalks and crossings, as well as car, you know, making sure that everything is connected so that you don't have neighborhoods sort of cut off from other neighborhoods nearby, et cetera, which also opens things up, I think, for pedestrians and bikes.
Yeah, and I know, we, last meeting, we were talking to Emily about the downtown Flugerville area, and that was also a concern that a lot of us brought up about making sure that that part is also walkable and easy to get through the different shops and the new recreation center that's going to be built. So just making sure that all of that is easy to bike through, walk, scooter, you know, just accessible all around.
Yeah, I think, I mean, our city, like a lot of cities in Texas and the United States, is very car-centric, of course. But I think I've seen the staff working very hard to try and make sure that the new developments are not always just fully about cars. Like, working on the parking regulations to try to get that a little bit, a little bit better, so it's not just cars everywhere, but making it more accessible to bikes and pedestrians. And, and the thing that I've seen that, that I like is that you kind of have to think about it from a different direction of not just, do the people just go where the cars go? But maybe there's places where you could put a pedestrian connection or a bike path that, that doesn't really make sense for a car to go there. You don't have space, but a connection through there, like you're talking about going to school or going to a shopping center is really useful. So I've seen a couple instances where we've, we've made specific requirements for that or we've rejected things because they didn't have that, or they were trying to, trying to put a development through that didn't have the right accessibility. So that's something that, that I've seen us doing a good job of.
Well, and something else for walkability that I think will be really cool because you're going to be looking at all the different departments is, you know, we can approve or recommend approval or denial of development separately. We're not the Parks Commission, but the Parks Commission is all these trails. And at the higher levels of government, at council and the manager's office, they are looking at those things all together. And so while some street, like, to your point, some streets may not be walkable, but there's an alternative way to get there on foot via a trail. And it's actually, in the Flugerville Aspire 2040 Plan and in the Parks Master Plan, there's a lot of long-range thought about using the trails not only as recreation but also as transportation. And so I do think that the city has really excellent leadership for that. And it's definitely something, there are a lot of things like, I think transportation is one of the best examples, where you have different departments of government that are responsible for things that affect each other. And not so much in Flugerville. I think Flugerville does a good job of breaking silos, but I've definitely seen it in other cities, especially major cities, where historically throughout the nineties and the early two thousands, we saw that lower-income communities were grossly underserved by buses. And a lot of that was because the bus routes were planned by the Transportation Department with an emphasis on traffic abatement, not thinking about lower-income people needing buses to get around. And so that's an example of, like, silos in government inadvertently causing problems. I think that's one that's being addressed now, but keep your eyes open for other examples like that and point them out to us.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's actually, one of the neat things about serving on Planning and Zoning the last few years too is that we, we get to work with the Parks Commission fairly often, whether it's on the trails, the future park plans and locations. We, P C D C, yeah, and we team up on the Public Art Program as well. So some of those projects come through, Planning and Zoning, which is always kind of fun to see how, where those are going and what they're going to look like and provide some feedback on it. But to your point, so even at the advisory level, we try anyway to work with the others that are, that are relevant. Do you have any questions for us?
Did you do a lot of mock voting in high school?
Mock voting?
Yeah, like, what you would vote for if you could vote. Do you do things like that?
Um, I think.
They used to do it back in my day. I don't know about your day.
They do it a lot. I remember, I think I did it one year in elementary school, but not in Texas.
Oh, not in Texas?
Yeah, no, I, I did it because I'm from Puerto Rico, so I know we did it there, but when I moved here, we didn't really do that.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting. Are you, you're not doing it even in your advisory, what you're doing here, like mock?
No.
I know at my old high school, well, not old high school because I never went there, but back in New York, they had something, the district was called, like, Shenandoah, and they had this, like, Shen, like senate thing. And they had something similar to that, I think. I don't know the details.
Okay, yeah, so I'm from New York. We did it there. We did a lot of, like, even, like, from elementary to all the way to high school to learn about government.
Yeah.
And not, like, sit in class and, like, learn about history, which is amazing. You should learn about history. But it's not as boring as learning about history.
Uh, history is awesome. I'm so sorry that you had to do it.
I enjoyed mock voting and history and all of that, but some kids don't. And it makes it more exciting if there's a vote, like fake voting. Yeah. And it kind of gets you away from what your parents would vote for, for, like, what you want to vote for, because it just gets you ready. So I was just wondering what they did here.
In sixth grade for me in Texas, we did it, but that was a very long time ago.
Again, I said in my day. I don't know.
Yeah, we did mock voting as well, and then you had to, like, walk through why you were voting a certain way. So you had to, like, verbalize why you were voting a certain way.
And girl's state and boy's state, what, what year do they do that? Junior year of high school? Did any of you do girl's state or boy's state?
No.
It's like mock you in, but it's not mock Texas Legislature?
Yeah, I've, I've definitely heard of it, and I think, I don't know what grade it is, but it's definitely high school level.
I feel like it's the summer after your junior year.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I'm sorry I was late. If you, if any of you are not yet, if any of your juniors are younger, highly recommend looking into that. Other questions for us? Yeah, oh, sorry.
And I, I don't know if, this would be interesting to y'all to hear some of our, like, backgrounds of what we do and kind of why we're, we decided to be on a commission or anything like that. So I figured that could be interesting too, because we all, I think we all have very different backgrounds and different reasons for being on these commissions. I think that could be interesting for y'all if you're interested in hearing that. And then maybe y'all might have specific questions for people based off of what they do in their job or what they learn or what they've, you know, studied or anything.
Yeah, that's great. Should we start at that end of the dials there?
So I'm Teresa. My background is in something called industrial organizational psychology. So it's the study of the workplace. At my job, I do change management, so I help teams get their products, which are specifically data and analytics-related, adopted and used by the rest of the company. So I joined the commission because I wanted to find a way to give back, and it's a good, really good learning experience for me because I haven't done something like this before. So, yeah. I guess that's it. Any questions? Feel free to ask now or later. Happy to answer.
What sort of products do you help market or?
So the group I support are the data scientists and data engineers mainly of the company. So they develop data and analytic products. So I probably, I can't go into too much detail, but they develop these insights and tools for other areas of the company to utilize that are related to data and analytics.
What did you study?
I know. Industrial organizational psychology.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so scientific study of the workplace. So if you're interested in psychology, you don't have to just go into clinical psych. There are a lot of different areas. For me, like, there's no counseling, training or anything, so I don't have a clinical or counseling background.
And change management is hard, so it's awesome that you're doing that.
Very tiring.
So like, you know, you guys know how, like, there's all these different softwares that your parents are supposed to use to, to check your grades online, and they change periodically, and nobody knows how to use them? That's because they don't have, that's because a change manager could help them with that. It's, am I getting it right?
Yeah, it's trying to move people through the process of change because changes can be a very emotional experience for most people, which that's completely normal. So it's trying to move people successfully from a current state of working or being to the desired future state of, you know, wanting them to exhibit specific behaviors or mindsets or, you know, engage with different ways within the company.
You're here.
Yes, good job. Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea. I think you can actually see it right in front of me. I studied civil engineering at U T, so was doing some roadway and footplane management, footplane maps, things like that for a few years. And the past nine years have been working with Austin and Pennant School District on their bond program. So bonds are what go to voters to vote on, and it can be really large bond packages. The two that I've worked on is a billion-dollar bond program that was passed in twenty seventeen in Austin. And then in twenty twenty-two, there was a two-point-four-billion-dollar bond program. And my team manages the design. We're basically represent the district in managing the architect during design and the general contractor during construction. So I've been doing that for about ten years now and was previously on the Parks and Rec Commission, just because I really love green spaces and, I don't know, it just felt like a nice way to get into local government in spaces that I like to use a lot, like trails and parks and everything. And then we started a Parks Foundation, a nonprofit from that as a subcommittee. So I'm a board member on that Parks Foundation, and this is my first year on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I really like it. It's a lot more on the engineering side of things, planning. But I still get my park fun stuff with the Parks Foundation, so I'm, I'm happy to still be connected there. Do you have any questions for, for me?
I'm Sally. I am a commercial broker, so I work with developers to build from dirt up buildings. I work mostly in gas stations and retail centers. So I have dealt a lot with planning and zoning with my clients and other, not just Flugerville, but like Cedar Park, Austin, to figure out where best suited these properties would work. If it works for my clients and it works for the city of, I mean, the city of Flugerville, the city of Boston. What else? I am my own broker. My degree is in marketing and psychology.
Before I go, questions?
Yeah, questions?
For the New Yorker?
Yeah.
Y'all are very quiet.
My name's Amanda Majin. I am, I don't have a short way to say my job. So my bachelor's degree is in history because history is awesome and not boring at all.
A lot of kids don't like it.
But my, my master's is in public policy, and so, which is a similar degree to the local government, a lot of the roles here. But it's a, it's another one of those degrees you can do a lot of different things with. So I actually, the industry I work in is public health. Bless you. I work in public health. I was, I was with the state for a while, and then I've been with nonprofits for the past decade. And I'm, I've been a project manager and a grants director. And right now I work at a member organization, so we help nonprofit health clinics throughout the state. And my role is to help them with financial sustainability, which is a challenge when you have to pay doctors to serve patients who can't pay them. And, uh, yeah, I highly recommend exploring all the different public policy, public affairs options because you guys are clearly already interested in this kind of thing. But just there are so many different career paths you can go down with, with that kind of degree. I cannot overstate how it's really, my son says I'm very boring, but I think it's really fun, so he. Do you guys have any questions?
What different nonprofits have you worked with?
Um, I've worked with, I don't want to, so I, I need to keep a really, a good wall between my job and my volunteer work. But in Austin, I've worked at, so I've only ever worked for government or nonprofit. Yeah, even, well, except for, like, waiting tables in college. I've worked for health clinics where I manage the grants for them, and so I worked with all, and it was really fun because grants touch everything, so I got to work with all of the different departments in the health clinic, even though I'm not clinical. So I would, you know, get with the, the clinical teams and be like, what do you guys need that you can't, you know, afford? And I would advise them, like, you don't want to use them, you don't want to use grant dollars on this, but you could use it on this instead, and da-da-da-da-da. And I worked with the finance department really closely, and I worked with the operations department really closely, and I worked with the C E O really closely. But then now I'm at a nonprofit member association, and member associations are another one where policy is handy because they, they also do, like, public interest lobbying. I'm not, I'm not a lobbyist. I did that as a volunteer in oh-five with the A C L U. Highly recommend that for experience, but that is also how I learned that it's not what I want to do.
I have a nonprofit.
You have a nonprofit? Okay, well.
We help, but we, well, our group is hopefully helping those that don't get served, even the smallest, smallest of groups. So, like, do you have a nonprofit question? Because you also have a nonprofit.
Yeah, you founded a foundation.
Yeah, yeah. So do you have a nonprofit question?
How do you fund a nonprofit?
So.
It depends. It varies a lot.
So the grant program is great, but some of the grants don't let you make more money than the grant. So you're stuck and you're stymied. We accidentally got, accidentally got a grant. Um, we got a grant, yay, um, but we got a grant, and so we were stymied on what we could do and how we can do it. The other way to do it is to raise funds through, like.
Donation.
Donations.
Major gifts.
You know, Target. Um, small companies, your friends, your family. Like, we're having this, an event in October, and we've gotten twenty-five K in donations. So we're able to have this event, but like.
Yeah, and every nonprofit is different, and every, and grants are different, and development is different. And that's why you go to grad school, honestly, because, like, most of my graduate work was on nonprofit management. So like, if you have two years, I could explain it?
Yeah.
But basically, so there's government grants, and they're very, like, data-driven. They're like, we, we have an outcome in mind, and we are willing to reimburse you for costs, blah. And you have to give a lot of data, and it's not, and then foundations are like, we want to feel good, and we want a story. And so the, the, it's a little bit easier to spend the money, but you have to, it's a totally different mindset when you're dealing with those two different funders. And that's grants, and then development is donors from individuals, donors from corporations, and then certain types of foundations are more like a donor than a, than a grant maker. And my best friend from undergrad, so we've been friends for like twenty-five years, she does development, and I did grants, and we would never do each other's jobs.
No.
And, and then, yeah, some nonprofits can make a profit. They just have to put it back into the mission, not give it to shareholders, but then depending on your fund or some funders.
Yeah, we do a zero net, so at the end of the year, we're zero, and we start January first getting more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so every year it's zero.
It, yeah.
So it's a challenge.
Small nonprofit, I'm guessing?
Very small.
Yeah, less than a hundred-million-dollar operating budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the other thing. I've worked at nonprofits.
It's very exciting to be small and not be governed.
Yeah.
So that's why it was great to have the grant, but also not great to have the grant.
And I've worked at nonprofits that were around a million-dollar operating budget, and then I've worked at nonprofits that were two-hundred-million-dollar operating budget.
I have to quit my job because it's going to be too bad.
See, that, see, and like, that's the thing too, is when you, like, money that would be a lot of money to an individual isn't a lot of money to get things done for a bunch of people.
But you have to work a lot to, if you're at that level.
Well, I mean, yeah, again, I was at large nonprofits that were two-hundred-million-dollar operating budget, so it was more like a corporation.
The Flugerville Parks Foundation does not have that large of a budget.
Otherwise you would be able to walk to school and/or like there would just be a scooter taking you to school.
Right. But yeah, no, you have a train. And have a train. He's not here.
We're at a metro. That would be awesome.
So yeah, also frankly, an MBA is another good degree for nonprofit management. But you're more likely to get a scholarship for a MPA or an MPP. If you're good enough to get in, you're good enough to get funded with a policy degree. The Masters of Business, they expect you to make your money back. But, but yeah, lots of finance, lots of.
But there's a bunch of charities here in Flugerville that if you wanted to, like, join a charity just to see what it's like, there's so many, like.
Circle of Hope has a lot of teenage volunteers.
Yeah.
And I can't think of others and I, I feel, I'm 100 Women of Flugerville.
Yeah, the Women of Flugerville.
Like Backpack Friends is one that's pretty well known.
Flugerville Education Foundation.
Yeah.
The Parks Foundation also has volunteers every month. And we love having high school students. We had a lot of high school students at our last event, the Heritage Park.
She's probably going to give you a shovel and have you dig.
Yeah. Dig around in the park. It's not glamorous work. It's usually picking up trash or planting trees, but it's a lot of fun. We have a, we have a, we have a Facebook. I don't know if you guys have Facebook.
They probably don't because they're so, yeah.
No, we have Instagram.
Can you cry? Can you cry?
Don't say "the."
I have an Instagram, but we're, 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 we're trying, it's going to look like it's pretty bare. We'll have a better Instagram in about a month, so feel free to follow us.
Get your parents to follow on Facebook and then they can tell you when the event is.
Anyhow.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
So I'm Nick Hudson. I'm a structural engineer, although I work in solar energy now for the last 10 years or so, which doesn't really have a lot of structural engineering. So kind of more like a project manager and development manager. But the way that I got involved in P&amp;Z is that I would be an engineer or a development manager on some of these projects that would go in front of this type of council somewhere else. And it was interesting to kind of be on that side of the, of the podium, trying to make a presentation, trying to get in the minds of the people over here and understand what they're looking for and what they, what they want to see for a new project. And, you know, 10 years ago in the solar industry, there was a lot of doubt, especially the kind of places where you would build solar is usually out in the middle of nowhere, where there's, yeah, just a lot of hesitancy towards that kind of thing. So that was always part of the challenge at that point. And so when I was doing things like that, I was kind of, well, I wonder what, what Flugerville does for that kind of thing. And, and yeah, I found that it was, it was pretty accessible to just kind of come to these meetings and eventually ask to be on the commission. And I've been doing this for almost six years now and it's been really interesting. And it'll see this side of it, you know, kind of why you might say no to some things that, that seemed like a good idea. And yeah, it's been, it's been really interesting.
You reminded me of something. Can I say something? Nick, Nick reminded me, so when I went to grad school, I went in Baltimore. So I'm, I'm from Texas. I'm seventh generation Texan, grew up out in the middle of nowhere. And I'm really glad I studied policy in another state because there are a lot of things about Texas that I didn't appreciate until I was somewhere not here, that, that doesn't have open record laws like we do. So they don't have open meetings and they don't have open records. And so the planning and zoning is behind closed doors. And the public doesn't have access to it like we do here and they aren't able to, to, to give comment. They aren't even able to like see the minutes. And, and, and you can, like, and I went to grad school specifically in Baltimore. And when I was there, I was there from '07, 2007 to 2009. And the majority of the buildings in Baltimore, the majority, were abandoned. And in 2007, years before I got there, 80%, eight zero, 80% of their properties were abandoned. And nobody, because their planning and zoning was so opaque, developers couldn't get in to redevelop those properties. So they were just sitting there and like, it was, it was, it was such a mess. And so I didn't really appreciate how amazing it is that we have this openness in Texas until I was somewhere that didn't have it. And then beyond that, I think this particular, this city staff does a really good job with the agendas and the reports online. Like they're, the, the reports are so well done. And they, they tie it back to the Aspire 2040 Plan, which had so much public input. The staff here in, in Flugerville do a very good job of getting more than the minimum of public input. So just wanted to thank you for talking about how, how it was easy. That reminded me.
Yeah.
You're here.
And do y'all have questions for Nick?
I think just regarding solar.
Yeah.
Because my grandfather lives like out in the middle of nowhere, East Texas, Piney Woods. And there's a lot of solar development. Especially in places where they cut down the trees, drill for oil, and then they just have a blank plot of land.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, how could we combat without destroying like the woods? Like maybe moving solar into urban areas on top of industrial buildings? Or like residential areas? Like maybe paying the homeowner or the person that owns the business rather than spending a bunch of money buying land?
Yeah, there's, so in the solar industry, there's a lot of different kind of financing models. A lot of the smaller systems rely on a lot of subsidies and, and financing that comes from either local government or the federal government. Some of those subsidies were recently kind of curtailed or they will be soon, which is unfortunate. But solar energy in general has gotten to the point where it's cheap enough that you can usually put it up somewhere, even as simple as your house, and it will pay itself back just in the offset of your utility bills within about 10 years, maybe less sometimes. So we're kind of getting to that break even point where you don't need as many of those financing schemes to make it work. But at the same time, that also kind of just leaves it in the open market where you can kind of build it almost anywhere that it makes sense. So yeah, the kind of places that are going to get the most development is solar, are the places that are paying a lot of money for energy right now. And I think one of the, one of the biggest things that's happening in the energy market as a whole is, it has to do with AI and the rise of the amount of power and the amount of data centers that you need to actually run all these AI systems that we have. It's, it's like an exponential curve that's going up and up. So I personally, being in the solar industry, think solar is a great solution to that because you don't have to necessarily build a new, you know, fossil fuel plant. You don't have to build coal plants to cover it or nuclear or anything like that. You can, you can kind of, solar is very modular. They're called solar modules and they're as small as, you know, a sheet of plywood basically. But you can have a system that has one of those. I've, I've designed systems that have more than a million of those. So it is very flexible. You could put it, yeah, on the top of warehouses. I'm working on a project right now that's an open pit mine that's saying, hey, we're kind of getting a bad rap because we're an open pit mine. What can we do to offset some of our costs and also kind of put it out front a little bit, say, hey, we're doing solar as well? And so that's, that's a great fit because it's, it looks like it's going to be economically beneficial for them. They get to pay smaller amount of money for the energy. The energy is right there. It's reliable. They know where it is. You can put a battery on it so you can have it during the day and the night. So I'm, I'm excited to see kind of as the technology is advancing, as the energy prices are going to keep going up because of the data center demands. I think we're going to see a lot more solar and energy storage in, in a lot of other places. Not just cut down a bunch of trees, like you say, and, and do it there, but in a lot more intentional ways and, and utility scale ways.
Do you think that's like a legislation thing that we have to do? Like make it more that they build solar on warehouses and buildings that they come up versus data centers? Is that more in line with what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Maybe not legislation, but like here, we would start it here and then it would trickle out?
It's the kind of thing that, I mean, pretty much any, any government can offer subsidies or can, a lot of places in California, I think, as a state are requiring some solar and some energy storage on all new developments. And so that's something that can be done at, at the state level to kind of jumpstart it a little bit. But at the end of the day, if, if it's not a good economic proposition, it's, you know, it's not going to be a winning proposition in the long term. So, but I, I think we're kind of at a, at a tipping point where it's, it would almost be economically stupid. Not, if you need more energy, to not try and get it from a renewable source rather than fossil fuels.
And to expand, I don't really know the financing side of it, but I was Googling what IECC stands for. I had no idea what it was. The International Energy Conservation Code. So certain entities can adopt certain code expectations that really require to get a permit in that city to meet certain expectations within those codes. So for example, Austin is adopting the 2024 IECC code, which actually requires solar panel to be a part of, of developments for buildings of a certain size. So a large urban area is requiring within their permitting and their code process, certain solar expectations. So, you know, advocacy on, you know, a government level can lead to cities adopting certain code expectations. For example, AISD, Austin and Pennant School District, for any of their new construction, they require at least Austin Energy rebuilding three star or LEED Silver Certification. So that entity, that, that district says, if we're doing a new construction, we are going to do it to the sustainability standards. So even having entities through wanting to be sustainable, through advocacy of the people expecting them to be sustainable. Community members expect for AISD to be sustainable. So then they make these commitments to meet certain sustainability goals within their buildings. And then that creates a more sustainable society. So that's a way that folks like on a ground level can advocate for things by asking questions like, okay, I hear we're doing X. Like what, what are we doing that's sustainable with the way that we're doing this? And that's a lot of questions that we ask here for longevity. Are, you know, what are we doing to make sure that what we're putting in is, is sustainable and is considering those types of expectations?
And shout out to the nonprofits because IECC, LEED, like those are also industry nonprofits that set these standards because it's all well and good for advocacy to say, we want it to be better in X way. But these, these nonprofits that are usually national will actually set the standard so that there's a unified guideline. Like A, so that you know it actually is sustainable and you're not requiring, you know, city staff to have even more expertise. And then B, so that it's consistent, so developers can have their, we know that our development meets these certifications and no matter where we go, we can say. And so again, nonprofit management.
And also, I mean, also voting, because if you don't advocate and you don't vote for what you want, then you're not going to get it. So like if there's, like, I know they're taking away solar subsidies. But if you go to your government, your local government, go, well, we'd like to keep it, how do we get this done? The nonprofit would be your backup and you can get the word out and you can be an advocate for it and then vote for it.
An interesting thing happened with a kind of big, beautiful bill this year is that it, it started off looking quite bad for solar energy and renewables. But what happened in between is that the, the original bill included these big statements that basically said, all this is going to end by this date and you have to stop doing it by this date. But what they didn't really say was, okay, what are the terms of that? What, what, you know, how does that actually work? And in the last few months, what's happened is that there've been a lot of back channel communications between a lot of legislators from both sides, thankfully, who are hearing from their constituents and hearing from their local governments that are saying, well, we actually need these subsidies. We need this to do what we want to do because it helps us with costs and energy conservation and everything else, all the other goals we want to do. In a lot of these, you know, quote unquote, red states. So that led to a lot of the actual regulations that came out of it and the actual instructions that came out of it for the industry were a lot softer than they could have been. And that happened because there was a lot of feedback, because there was a lot of blowback, if you will, even for the, for the big policy decisions. So I think that's an important takeaway for me was that, you know, you can have the bluster and whatever of the frontline and say, okay, I'm virtue signaling and I'm doing this because that's what I said I would do. But then what actually matters and what actually happens in the industry sometimes can be determined by a lot smaller things. So it's, it's important to look at the details.
I'll go. My, my journey here is quite the winding road. I originally, and, and I might be the only one now, I realize that does work, that's not related at all to my original college degree.
I mean, I did major in Russian history, so.
That's very niche, but so I originally studied journalism. And my first couple of jobs out of school were in Washington DC working for PBS and NPR. So I. Yeah, it was, it was an amazing experience being out there. I worked mostly on news programs. And so I was, did very little reporting, but I did a lot of writing and producing for television news mostly. And then I sort of figured out that I wasn't being effective at telling the same stories that we were doing for TV and radio on the internet at the time. And so that's kind of how I then transitioned into like digital and websites and, and tech things was because I needed to figure out how to build new tools so that we could tell better stories online. And so one of my projects back then was we sort of built the first sort of Hulu for PBS, the video streaming portal. So I was able to work on that and figured a bunch of those things out. And so then I sort of transitioned fully into technology. And then for the last 10 or 15 years, somewhere around there, I've been basically in product management, which nobody knows what that means for the most part. But essentially I work on strategy, business planning, some project planning for software. And so some of my most recent projects, or the ones giving him grief, I work on AI. We built, we're building software tools to help businesses be more efficient by automating the workflows through AI and, and helping companies with change management on how to set policies for employees and how to help folks integrate that into their everyday work. And then I ended up on planning and zoning, sort of similar, hopefully, to what you all are doing. I originally took Flugerville 101, which is a course every year, where similar to what you all are doing, you go and talk to each of the different departments and learn about them. I also did the Citizens Police Academy, which was really fun. So that was like, I think it was a six, six weeks, maybe somewhere around there, speaking with different departments within police. And then I've been involved in a bunch of other, like several of the folks on here have been in different strategic plans and visioning for different projects and those types of things, which was really fun. I'd realized that I had a lot of ideas and opinions and so sort of jumped in from, from there. And I've been on.
And now you're running.
Yes.
It's going to try to be hopefully our next council member.
Also true.
So if you see Jonathan Kaufman's sign.
If you have any questions for him.
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
So I, this, this is about something that you had said earlier about how you were involved with a lot of voter registration stuff. And I know that a lot of people here in YAG, like me and one of our other members, Natalie, who isn't here today, was interested in kind of learning more about that. So do you think that's something that we could get involved in as well?
Yeah, absolutely. There's basically, it, it's pretty easy to learn and jump into. You actually literally can watch a YouTube video that takes like 30 or 40 minutes and then fill out an application and get certified to help people register to vote. And then there's several organizations in central Texas that help to coordinate where people can go to help folks get registered. The League of Women Voters is one that does a ton of that. And that's actually the program that I did the high school work with. It's nonpartisan. It's just their goal is to get people to register to vote. And so, but there's several other types of organizations that also do a lot of that. But even just as an individual, you know, you can get, get certified and essentially wherever you can find somebody that isn't registered or if they've moved and need to update their registration, you're able to do that.
What was the organization again?
Uh, the League of Women Voters.
I think it's called the Texas League of Women Voters, isn't it?
It would be our, our local version of it.
You can just Google League of Women Voters. It'll pull up.
Yeah.
The ones near you. And yeah, be sure you pull up the Texas or Travis County. But, I mean, they've been around since the women got the vote in 1920. It's how they started was to get women registered. In 1920, it wasn't that long ago.
Women's suffrage.
But yeah, it's really Google-able. And they're a really great organization and especially they've maintained their nonpartisanship this whole time.
And they also have some really, really awesome resources for people wanting to understand what's on the ballot, what type of things to be voted on. It's not really like recommendation based because it's, to their point, nonpartisan. But it is a good guide too. So I feel like one thing that I struggled with whenever I was younger and wanting to vote was, was really understanding what am I even voting for? It's so challenging, especially in local elections, to find any information sometimes on what's on the ballot. So finding resources like that, I think, kind of helps, you know, makes it a little bit more. Um, so finding resources like that, I think, kind of helps, you know, makes it a little bit more um, what is it, like achievable, unachievable, but like more attainable to, to know what you're, you're voting for. Because it is sometimes hard and then if you read the language on the ballot, it's so confusing if there's propositions.
Yeah, they kind of give you a summary at the end, like explain the ballot, explain what's on the ballot, show you what's on the ballot, excuse me. And then gives you the reasons for yes, no vote, so that you can make up, and it's like four sentences. So it kind of gives you like a real quick blurb of how and what that means. Because yeah, when I was eighteen and started to vote, I was like, I don't know how to vote. I'm just gonna vote lo- you know.
Get national.
National. And then I started voting locally.
Yeah, I never voted locally.
Voting locally is actually the better way to go.
I know.
So if you can't, you don't want to vote, please always vote. But if you don't want to vote nationally, vote locally, because that's, makes the biggest impact period. It's like, your grandfather wouldn't have had that piney woods issue if there was more voting going on and more acknowledgement to what was it, what was happening.
And also something super important to know that I did not learn for a very long time. I'm so ashamed to say, but it's not just November. There are elections all the time. There are may elections, so you know, it's a, to really like engage in local politics, which obviously y'all are interested in because you're, you're here. Um, it is kind of keeping up with all the different elections. There could be runoffs like in, in a local election if someone doesn't get fifty percent or more of the vote. Like right now for mayor, there's four people running. So if none of those candidates give fifty percent, then they will have a runoff election. So that'll be another time to vote after November. And if you're not following that, you would never be aware that there's another election after the November election.
Yeah, there was, there was one this past May for the school board election, which I was a student clerk at the polls for that one. So that was an interesting experience also, learning about, you know, the different types of elections that are not just the president and vice president, all that.
Right, yeah, people just go out mainly for those, but really if you go locally, you're gonna really get a bang for your buck on that one.
Yeah, those are really, and it's um, I think I, I always encourage high school students to do it as well because you get excused absences. Uh, and you get paid and so um, it's, it's a pretty good deal if you're willing to, you know.
Yeah. My, my parents didn't even know there was an election until I told them, oh, I want to work as a student clerk in this one. They were like, there's an election?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
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 I mean, there's a lot of folks that try to advocate for everything being in November, but that's a, it's our battle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had one quick question for you guys as a commission, because you all very clearly come from very different backgrounds and there's seven of you and Commissioner Crane is here. So what happens when you all disagree on something that comes before you?
Oh, I think we just talk about it.
Yeah.
Explain, we actually had a disagreement last, September, not September, in August. We actually had a disagreement in August.
I'm actually trying to work in all of the old, old lady, old lady phrases whenever we disagree that I can. Like um, don't pee on my leg and tell me it's raining.
Oh my god, who says that?
Who does, see, you're from New York, you're not from the south.
Don't say words like that, that's gross.
See, another disagreement.
I've never heard that before.
Really?
No. What is that?
It's an old, it's a very old, common southern phrase. It's not, they don't usually say pee.
Yeah.
Southern humor and um, allegory and, no, we discuss it. Um, we don't stick really strictly to Robert's rules, but we do have Robert's rules when it comes to actually making the decision. And when we're in disagreement, that's when the motion and amendment to the motion process becomes the most important and Jonathan keeps us in line.
And this was a disagreement.
Yes, we're very upset.
So yeah, it's not like adversarial.
That's one of my favorite things about being an adult is like, oh, I can disagree with you about something and still be your friend.
Like a real adult?
Or like at work, you know, like at work, my favorite workplace was one where we had comfortable conflict. Like we were, we all know, we are all here because we care about Flugerville.
Yeah.
We're all really smart people, highly educated, dedicated, we're doing this for free. So if we disagree, it's about the work and the vision for the future and it's not personal and.
It's not, it's personal because it's personal to Flugerville, it's personal to our peoples that are here.
But it's not like, yeah.
It's not personal to us.
And ultimately, we're trying to do what's best for all of the citizens, right?
In the end, it becomes your, what we do up here becomes literally your issue. So yeah.
Like Jonathan still likes me, we disagreed on the last meeting.
Exactly. Yeah, I think um, you know, there's, there's a lot, uh, it takes a lot of mutual respect, I think, in those types of situations, which we certainly have um, as a commission here. Um, and like you said, I think we generally talk it out and um, try to deal in facts uh, wherever we can. And um, yeah, right. Um, I think when it gets difficult for all of us, I think is when there's very um, passionate members of the public speaking for or against something, um, that may not, may or may not be reflective of what the overall community might like or want. Um, and so those are always difficult because we also want to be mindful and empathetic to the folks that are taking their time to come up and speak to us about something that they feel really strongly about. And so we try to, try to handle that um, very respectfully and with empathy uh, from where they're coming.
Yeah, and I think um, when there's disagreement, um, one thing that I really appreciate about a lot of the folks in this commission is I think we all are, are pretty great at acknowledging the other person's perspective as well. Saying, you know, while I think that is a really good point, this is, you know, my perspective on that. And I, I, I think the, the way in which you can kind of tee up your own thoughts um, makes it non-adversarial, you know, by, by stating out loud someone else's perspective, by giving everyone the space to talk and feel comfortable in talking. Um, one thing that I appreciate about the way Jonathan and others lead this, um, but it's always making sure everyone has a chance to speak. You know, we're obviously very talkative folks, as you can tell up here. So um, you know, I think giving everyone the space to have the chance to talk um, also just leads to that mutual respect. And then when the, that mutual respect is tested by disagreement, it kind of holds true in the, in the way that we might disagree. So I, I really appreciated that last meeting because we were, we were very split um, in the way that we voted and it was, the conversation was very interesting. And even the people I disagree with, I thought they made really awesome points. Um, so I think acknowledging that and being open to hear that is what makes it honestly a, a growth experience. Yeah, kind of fun.
I think I almost, I almost wish that we would build things down more often.
That we would?
Then we'd have like a motion that somebody would say, oh, I want to do this or I want to, yeah, an amendment or something. And then we say, no, we don't want that. And then we'd have to figure out how to compromise and do it. I feel like by the time we vote, we're always usually on the same page. And we just know how we're gonna vote and okay, it's gonna be a majority anyways. I kind of wish every once in a while, but you know, we just try to be a little more creative and then be like, no, we're not gonna do that. Okay, let's try to do something else.
I want to add an amendment and name it Fred kind of thing.
Yeah, but, no, it's, it's good. I mean, there's good things about that too, that, that we have the discussion first and then by the time we get to the vote, there really aren't any mysteries.
Right.
But, but yeah, I think uh, at the same time, there's, there's a healthy level of um, compromise and, and, and other things that you can do with voting as well.
Oh, and you can go back to that meeting and hear what we're talking about. So like, it's always recorded, it's always ready for you guys to listen to it again online. So yeah, but you do have a question.
Um, so back to what you said earlier about AI. Um, I was wondering if you could elaborate more on like how you use it on your current projects?
Sure, yeah, so um, funny enough, I use AI to help build AI, other AI. Um, and so uh, I will use AI to uh, speed up analysis. So I do a lot of, deal with a lot of data and um, have to find sort of trends and patterns in it. And AI is really good at that type of work. Um, so that's one for sure. Um, occasionally use it for uh, for writing. If I have a bunch of thoughts and I can just, you know, speak into my phone and have AI organize it for me. Um, that's super helpful. Um, and then beyond that, um, one of the more fun applications that I do is um, using AI to sort of mock up um, what a new screen or a design for something might look like um, as a way to better or more effectively communicate with my peers. I'm not a designer, but if I can do something that's, you know, better than a Sharpie on a napkin, which I used to do, um, then you know, AI can be, generally be pretty useful for that. So a ton of stuff and I'm always learning new tricks and, and ways to use it, honestly.
Yeah, I used a recently AI to help me build a restaurant space using ADA compliant hallways.
Oh, nice.
That's cool.
Um, like a new kind of robotic kitchen, um, which I think you guys are gonna hear about soon from somebody else. But uh, not, not today, but um, just kind of trying to decide how it would work in a space. So I used that and then it worked out pretty well. And then I went to another program where they do the pretty and then sent it back to me, you know. And then I was able to use it as illustrations for one of my job sites.
That's awesome.
I think one other thing specific to uh, the commission here that I think we've um, done really well at um, with the help of staff too, is with that public engagement. So you mentioned a lot of the planning and um, staff goes out and talks to and surveys as many people as they can. Similarly, um, one of the things I've certain, I've tried to do as chair is also be flexible with the rules when it, when there's someone who is here and engaged. And when we have disagreements sometimes, you know, not being afraid to pull somebody up. Let's talk to the developer or the land owner or the business owner and um, and get those clarifying questions and things like that. Um, and again, giving everyone the opportunity to, to do that whenever possible, just to make sure we're getting as much input um, as we can. Cool. All good? All right, well then uh, that was the only thing on uh, on the agenda tonight. So we are adjourned at seven fifty seven. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. Thank you for being here.